County Judge Martha Lisa Gomez Quintero.
Present.
Commissioner Juan R. Carmona.
Here.
Commissioner Valerie C. Iruano.
She stepped out to the.
Commissioner Alonzo G. Carmona.
Yeah.
Commissioner Jose E. Orenna.
Here.
The pledge allegiance. Just a moment, all the presenters and the presenter here just be as nice as you are. I'm your oath. Any public comments? Approval of minutes or?
You have a public comment.
We have a public comment.
Judge, do you know we're having a lot of problems with the appliance officer? And all the life involved. Trying to get him hired under you. I'm going to call people that you want me to do because we don't have one right now. And we're having a lot of problems with those. Those parks. And my plan is to have a park ranger under the commuters' form. That way we can just have access to the. I think it's. Take those. Problems that I've just got any information about.
Any other public comment?
Judge.
Yes.
I'm inviting the public and kids all be doing my eighth annual, ninth annual, eighth or ninth annual Tuesday at the Central Park in Ashland. Everybody invited.
Thank you.
Also, I got a call from Mac. My eighteen years finally in after two years of waiting.
Any other comments? Thank you. Approval of minutes of regular meeting of March thirteenth, twenty twenty-three.
A victory, no correction, so move.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Motion by Commissioner Alonzo Carmona, second by Commissioner Orenna, to call out the favor.
All right.
Judge, to make just to make a comment on the minutes. We get them before for the public. We just approve them. They come up, we do get them on. We do get a report on it before the commission work. So we go over them. It's not there that that's being approved, Judge.
Thank you for that information, Mr. Carmona.
Okay.
Two more.
Two. Two point one, approval of bonds.
No bonds.
No action taken. Two point two, discussion and approval, or excuse me, discussion and appropriate action, request use of Dimmitt County rodeo arena for active shooter training for Dimmitt Regional Hospital staff on June eighteenth, twenty twenty-three. Do we have anybody here from? You can come forward, Ms. Rivers.
Morning, Judge.
Morning.
Morning. So we requested the use of the rodeo arena. Hospital's going to be conducting an active shooter training in offensive management for the staff. There's a clerical error. They're supposed to be on the seventeenth, not the eighteenth, which is Saturday. And it will be open to other entities, government entities. They can actually send their staff to county, city, school. But they will have to make arrangements to pay for the instructor. Now, there will be a waiver signed, so that way no liability will be on any where the training will be taking place as far as well. We have done this in the past before, but the need for it has risen more now and actually more people have stressed interest in attending that training. So when we have the vaccination, the rodeo arena play the perfect place for that for that training. Any questions? Like I said, it all entities will be, once we get the final. They haven't been able to give me a price as to how much per student because they're waiting to see how many people will sign up yet. And just to give you an idea, our hospital has two hundred and fifty pools. So it's going to be on voluntary, but hospital will pay for the training. And it usually consists from two to three hours. So it depends that we have over so many students, they might be two sessions, one in the morning, then one in the afternoon. The instructor brings all the equipment, everything that's needed for that.
Uh, any motion?
Judge.
Open discussion. Do I have a second?
Second.
Motion by Commissioner Alonzo Carmona, second by Commissioner Orenna. Any discussion?
You know, you have to, there's a fee for it, correct? You know that?
For what, sir?
For using the building?
Yes, sir. And that's why when we had the vaccination, there was no fee.
No, but for something like this, and you're going to charge, we have, you know, we have to have a fee, correct, Mr. Pena?
Yeah, I believe that's what we had discussed. In terms of, I guess, any time that there's an event that's going to be hosted or there's a fee being charged by somebody else, in order for the county to be in compliance, we have to charge a small fee. So I believe it's either twenty-five dollars or fifty dollars. I need to get with Ms. Quintero.
Okay.
Fifty dollars.
Thank you.
And Mr. Ariz, real quick, I had a question.
Yes, ma'am.
I know you said it'd be open to other agencies.
Yes, ma'am.
Do those individuals that want to sign up for the course, do they have to?
Yes, yes, but individual, they'll be open to all the community as well, you know.
So they don't have to be T-CO certified?
They don't have to be T-CO certified because this is actually in the aspects of civilian.
Okay.
You know, we've had the training for law enforcement already, correct? Sure. So there's, hasn't been anything offered. How the authority has expressed interest in attending the school district, the city agrees with us all. So yes, anybody that can add, we'll actually have flyers and we'll put that out on Facebook once we get the amounts and so forth, so anybody can actually register.
Okay, thank you, Ms. Rivers. Any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. Two point three, discussion and appropriate action, status of legal matters regarding JP four, five, and seven, El Prado Martinez. I think we have to go into executive session. We're going to go ahead and go on to.
You know, it's very good.
On two point three, no action taken. Two point four, discussion and appropriate action. Presentation and request approval of Cali Estates subdivision.
Just good morning, Judge.
Good morning.
Commissioner Emerald Shaw with KCI Technologies. And yeah, we're coming back with the flat for further discussion. And I guess since we were here last, we received a couple of comments and have been coordinating with with Mr. Hale also on some comments that were received. And we also nailed everybody, I see the bigger flats for for girls. You all can see it a little better. But we added some flat notes and you can see those flat notes on the right side of the sheet. And we believe we've added the flat notes that hopefully address everybody's concerns on property. And one of the comments that we received was to provide a shared access agreement. And my client went ahead and visited with an attorney and we went ahead and took care of the shared access agreement in the form of covenants and restrictions, which you were just giving a copy of right now. And so if you'd like, I can kind of refer you to a few of those, a few items on those pages that I think would would show that we've addressed the concerns that they brought up. If you look at page three, at the very top of page three, section two, it says, any owner acquiring a lot or lots, either as a primary or subsequent purchaser is expressly prohibited from the division or subdivisions of any lot or lots so acquired without the consent of the Dimmitt County Commissioners Board. So what that says is nobody can further subdivide the property unless they come back to you, which is, you know, required by by state, state code anyway, state statute. And then under article two, you can see there, article two basically is the beef of of it. It talks about the restrictions and the shared access. And so you can see those items are basically mimicking exactly what you see on the flat. And I guess of concern, if I could draw your attention to, for example, item B. Item B talks about the how the driveways and the improvements will be equally owned and maintained by the owners of each individual lot, which was a question that was brought up. Item C states there, Dimmitt County is not responsible for the operation or maintenance of the driveways, shared access improvements, or any other improvements associated with the property. So that addresses the concern that there could potentially be any public maintained. So it's not publicly maintained. Specifically states there that it's a responsibility of the property owner. And then. And then I guess on the page four, the very top letter G, that addresses a comment that we brought up last time. It says, the lots are restricted to one single family residential building per lot unless the lots are replating in compliance with state law and local regulations. So that restricts it to one home. That was a comment that we brought up at the last meeting also. But again, we're we're here to see if there's any other comments or concerns that we may need to add to the flat. My client is very well open to addressing any concerns you all may have.
Now, here came a motion.
A motion would be that we authorized the county guys to look over this matter and then proceed if she's comfortable with it. Afternoon.
Sir, a second?
Second.
Any discussion? Yes, Mr. Holmes. Do you have a vote?
Yes. I had an opportunity to meet Mr. Charo. It's pleasant. The only other things that you might look for is, I believe, the joint shared access agreement is signed by an LLC. But the flat is individually under Charlie Harrison's name. So I asked Mr. Charo to clarify and make sure that was consistent. And if it was an LLC, which I think he said, Commissioner Harrison lives in Murano, and we just need to, I think the LLC has been created here in the state. So we just need a copy of the LLC document from my chair office, tell him to get to Mr. Harrison in terms of his hub. And the other is the text op permits.
Yes.
One of the five of the text op permits and build up some action taking for. So we can make that five approvals subject to them providing your office the text op permits, the text op has approved access related to shown on this one. And then I asked Mr. Charo to expand on one note where he talked about the last note on the file I received, ten had to do with onsite sanitary facilities and each lot being responsible for installing on basis. Said that it'd be nice to add one more lot. I know he has one there that says they're not proposing to install or connect to a public water system. But if you could have that note similar to that each lot should be responsible for developing its own groundwater supply for drinking water sources. And that, that's all I have. Thank you, Judge. Thank you for. Yes, and then of course, the county, I think this would follow the county's jurisdiction as far as municipal solid waste facility service. So I can, Mr. Charo, that he can put a note on five that each lot would have to apply for service from the county for municipal solid waste facility utilities.
Any discussion?
If I may, we we, I took note of those and we did prefer with that. We happen to address those.
All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries, thank you. If you can get all that information back to my office and ask it with Mr. Hale.
Yes, so the next step for us would be obviously to formally submit the driveway permits with text op. Like I had said before, we have gotten a preliminary approval from them. And so we'll do that and once we get to wrapping up the flat, we'll send it to you.
Thank you.
Thank you, appreciate it.
Discussion and appropriate action, monthly report from JP precinct one, Sonia Guedel of Perez for the month of February. My office has been advised that she's in training, so we'll now entertain, motion to the table.
Move.
Motion by Commissioner Alonzo Carmona, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Dolcava, in favor?
Aye.
Two point six, discussion and appropriate action, monthly report from JP precinct two, Mr. Alberto Esquivel. I don't see a representative.
Motion to table.
Motion to table by Commissioner Alonzo Carmona, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Dolcava, all in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. Two point seven, discussion and appropriate action, monthly report from JP precinct three, Ms. Letizia Hernandez for the month of February, twenty twenty-three. Motion by Commissioner Juan Carmona, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Orenna, any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries, thank you, Judge. Discussion and appropriate action, monthly report from JP precinct four, Mr. El Prado Martinez for the month of February, twenty twenty-three.
Good morning, Your Honor.
Good morning, Judge. Do I entertain a motion? Motion by Commissioner Dolcava, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Orenna, any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries, thank you, Judge.
Thank you.
Two point nine, discussion and appropriate action, monthly report from District Clerk, Ms. Maricela Gonzalez for the month of February, twenty twenty-three.
Good morning, Judge.
Morning. Now, here came a motion.
So move.
Motion by Commissioner Carmona, is there a second?
Second.
Motion by Commissioner Orenna, any discussion? Ms. Mari, quick question, were you able to get your internet?
No. We have continued to have issues with the internet. Our system crashes and so we're not able to access our our case management system or our E5. Friday, as a matter of fact, it was after a whole hour before we dimmed it. And so it is creating work shortage issues.
The last time, oh, I'm sorry.
Oh, yeah, that's right, discussion.
Okay. The last time we talked to them, maybe we sitting right here and he told us he was going to take care of it. So now our only alternative now is to look for somebody else. And I'm going to put it out for a for bits and then we'll go from there. I'm tired of this guy and he and he told us right there, sitting there, and he was going to take care of all the issues. And then he was going to be trained to this young man because apparently it looks like they don't know anything, but how can they fix something if they don't talk?
Wait, Mari, Mari, you said your internet was down? It's because we changed the password, that's why. So I went to go fix it, that's why.
No, that that was after the theft.
On Friday?
On Friday.
I went in the afternoon though, at two thirty.
This was about four o'clock. Three thirty, four o'clock, and it was up an hour because then both weren't able to access the LGS.
Yeah, I agree with Commissioner Carmona. Seems to be that there's an issue with the software or the system that we're currently utilizing. So I just wanted to make sure that you were, the services that you're supposed to be providing are able to do them. We're we're bear with us, we're trying to work to try to get the system fixed and find a resolution to it. I just want, on behalf of the Commissioners Board, I want to extend our apologies because I know we're having issues, I know my office is having issues, and we're all in the same building. But I just wanted to advise you that we are working on trying to get a resolution to getting the internet so that you can be able to execute your job properly.
Thank you.
Yes, ma'am. Thank you, Ms. Mari. Yes?
I know everybody's having issues, we're having an action, but it's not just us, it's different counties that have the same person or people that are running this business that are having issues. So it's not tech, I'm not defending the techs, but it's not their fault. I mean, it's not their fault.
I agree.
The problem is up where we're getting all the services from. We contracted this company and the companies are on this having the issues. And there's so much they can do. Of course, they fix one and then they have to do the other one. The thing is, if the way it was done, we'd have no paper. It's been been from one courthouse to another courthouse to the sheriff's office. So that's why by the time we get internet, the other one falls. They fix one, the other one falls, the other courthouse falls. So hopefully we do things. It's going to cost money, but we hope.
Yes, we're we're, our our plan is moving forward is to try to get a resolution to it, as Commissioner Dolcava said. It started with the sheriff's office where they were having issues with the company and we tried to fix that. And then we kind of thought we fixed that and then it started coming to our office and then Asherson started having problems. I know that old courthouse is also having issues.
We're having.
Now Commissioner.
Commissioner's office.
Carmona's office is having issues. So I think at this point, it's safe to say that it's outside of our hands in terms of, you know, putting blame on these particular, or I think it's out of our scope. So we're trying our very best, but I just wanted to, you know, that we're we're going to try to work on a resolution pretty fast.
I appreciate it.
Thank you. Two point ten, discussion and appropriate action, monthly report from the county clerk, Mr. Mario Garcia.
Motion to table.
There's a motion to table by Commissioner Alonzo Carmona, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Dolcava, all in favor?
Aye.
Two point eleven, discussion and appropriate action, monthly report from county commissioners for the month of February, twenty twenty-three. Commissioner Orenna, precinct one.
Motion to table, I mean, motion to approve.
Motion from Commissioner Carmona.
Second.
Second, or Commissioner Orenna, is there? Any discussion?
Do we table precinct one?
It's here. You're seeing one of them, two point eleven, right after Mrs. Mari's.
Corrected.
You stand corrected, Mr. Carmona?
Yes, ma'am.
All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. Two point one two, discussion and appropriate action, approval to house higher secretary to fill vacant position at county commissioners' office effective March twentieth, twenty twenty-three. Motion by Commissioner Dolcava, there's. Second by Commissioner Orenna, any discussion?
Judge, just for the court's information, yours, the secretary we had had a job, so she got our blessing because they're going to better themselves. I've always told them that. I told God because they're better than themselves. So and this young lady that's there right now is raising herself throughout a lot, she's still helping her a lot. So that's the reason we're not calling since the twentieth of March.
So she's been hired already?
Yes.
What she's going to get hired, yes.
And is that eleven dollars an hour?
Eleven dollars, yes, ma'am.
Any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. Two point one three, discussion and appropriate action, repair on County Road one oh one. Think you can talk about that right the last time?
Just for to be aware, County Road one oh one had structural damage due to, I guess, I can call it a bail out. And we said that people were to Mr. Gonzalez and the sheriff. And the sheriff said that he was going to get us a, but we haven't gotten anything from him other than the actual incident that now here. So what I'm asking is if we can go ahead and, they were going to try and do the insurance, but it's right now, it is a hazard out there. So I would like to be granted permission to go ahead and repair the dirt road if something else happens.
And what kind of report did you need?
I think they were going to contact, he was going to contact the insurance department with, and because Danny asked us another check of Vincent and reporting.
I'll play it for discussion or not, Commissioner, is there?
I'm sorry.
Excuse me, I'll take, I'll entertain a motion.
So move.
Move by Commissioner Juan Carmona, is there a second? Second by Commissioner Dolcava, discussion?
So at that time, I were.
That Mr. Gonzalez needed a different.
Something that he wanted to be done, so I contacted the sheriff on his request.
Well, what I believe I said is that if there is a case being filed on smuggling individuals, they have an opportunity to collect restitution.
Correct.
And we would need to make sure that any damage needs to be repaired to comply with the X amount of rules. And, you know, make sure we have estimates to be submitted to the sheriff department within the case that they may be planning for restitution.
We did submit an estimate to the sheriff.
Okay.
And he was, he said he would get back to us.
So normally the way that it works, and you can correct me if I'm wrong, Mr. Gonzalez, we obviously file a police report and have the sheriff's office investigate that particular case. And if they're going to indict or they're going to pursue charges on either the smuggling or evading arrest or reckless driving, whether they pursue the case in a in a felony fashion or a misdemeanor fashion, they need the information regarding the estimates and whatnot so that they can put that case together, present it to the county attorney's office or the district attorney's office. And then during the actual court system, the legal process, the judge would order there to be restitution so that they in turn can pay Dimmitt County back for the damages that were done to one oh one. So right now, unfortunately for the county of Dimmitt, and correct me if I'm wrong, we would have to bear the cost of repairing it until we can find out further information if this individual had insurance or not. Because if they don't have insurance, that doesn't mean we can't still try to get it. We can try to get it through a restitution process.
Is that what my plan is to have it fixed? I don't want to create any record update. And then come back and.
Those cases where there's damage to County Roads or other kind of property, you let me know because what I'm having to do is put a list together of pending smuggling cases, especially where they have misdemeanor cases, because it takes forever to get them indicted by the district attorney. And we could be sitting six months, a year, or almost two years while the individual gets indicted and that that property needs to be repaired. We don't want anybody else injured on that road.
So what what particular reported gene that he's asking about?
It's not anything different that we've already discussed. He's got to get the estimate of the damages the sheriff's office may include.
We got some of that.
And they made a turn and recorded if there's any insurance so that the client can be made to insurance and that's denied the restitution or the third option is, you know, it's viable to sue the individual in the district for current damages.
No, we're going to have the contracted company do, since it's, it meets their, the kind of. kind of, uh, takes up sort of, uh, requirement, we're not gonna try and do something else. So we're gonna go ahead and have the contractor get it before, uh, repairs. Well, I really have it done by the contractor. If something happens, we're gonna make it work that county will rely on. You understand? I want the contractor to do it.
So Commissioner, is this for information or you want us to approve the...
Approve it.
Repair?
But there was a motion again.
To repair it? All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. Two point one four, discussion and appropriate action, ratified salaries for C D L drivers.
Judge, on that one, I put it on the agenda. On, when I, when I created, uh, when I hired, uh, C D L driver, I didn't notice that we had gone. I had forgotten, let me see this. It was my mistake because I forgot that we had gone three dollars dollars. So what I put on, on the, on the, what do you call, what do you say that, what do you call it? On the payroll notice, I put ten dollars plus two, which was twelve dollars that we started as C D L. Upon completion after ninety days, we go ten dollars up to fourteen. That's basically what they earned for the year. And now, uh, I tried to ratify because my employee didn't get his salary that, that I had posted out there. And a question arose that it was eleven dollars plus two. And then I, we had a discussion, the, the first employee and I had a discussion. And I basically said, what I put on the payroll notice is what's supposed to be the four dollars. And he was going back and forth on that it was eleven dollars and then plus, plus two, which was thirteen. And then later on, he was telling me that it's dollars. But at the same time, I said, well, he already completed his ninety days. I, I needed to go to fourteen dollars. And I was told no, that he was gonna stay at thirteen. And I said, no, what I put on my payroll notice is what I'm requesting. I am his employer. And I don't know if it ever got corrected or not, but I, when I put fourteen dollars, that's what I expected you to do. And that's how we put it, right, Mr. Pedera? The C D L driver, fourteen?
I thought it was just eleven and two.
Well, no, it's eleven and two.
Go ahead.
Thirty days and then a dollar after the ninety days.
So I, I brought, um, I believe we're talking about the same, isn't it? But I brought the payroll notices that we received from your office. And the most recent one we got was that it, it just says salary rate fourteen dollars.
Yes.
So, but in the C D L case, there has to be a distinction of where that fourteen is coming from. So...
The licensing.
It needs to be, it needs to specifically say twelve dollars and then plus two for, to make the fourteen. But when we have received it, it wasn't filled out, um, correctly. It just said fourteen. So we can easily make this, we can easily make this correction on the next payroll to get them back paid what they're supposed to. But we just need the payroll notice filled out correctly.
Well, I figured if, if it's like that, um, courtesy would be to remind the Commissioner that he filled it out.
Okay.
Uh, because again, I might have skipped it because I might have not put the two dollars, but I still intended the fourteen.
Right, right, right.
But I would expect, I mean, I'm not saying I'm somebody's player, but I would expect a courtesy call and say, hey, your paperwork is wrong. Can you come in correctly?
Right. We could easily do that. Um, I just ask, I don't wanna make this a bigger issue than it is that whenever we do reach out to you that there's no yelling at anybody in my office and getting frustrated.
Nobody knows it.
I was sitting in my office and I could hear you yelling at my employee from where I was sitting. So I would just appreciate it if we, to disclose with anybody in the county, whenever we talk to each other, try to be respectful, especially to the employees, because they're not here to get yelled at by a different department. If anything, we should come and talk to the elected official of that employee and then it can be handled from there. That's the only really thing I wanna say on this matter.
And I didn't know, but I have always said that the employees do what the elected official says. So if I got a problem, I go to Mr. Pedera or you. I don't go to the employee.
I agree.
Because it's not their fault. It's between us, elected officials, that we need to correct their fault. And, and I can understand what you're saying. And I have seen it where they go into Mr. Pedera's office and they start yelling at the secretary. I go to Mr. Pedera. Okay? So...
I think, I think...
I, I think you're right. We need to go to the elected official to correct the fault.
And I think that's what you're saying, that it was, Commissioner called Eric, not you.
Yes, that's correct.
But for the record, I know you may have differences, but there was no yelling.
So the motion is to, I wanna clarify with the motion?
I've got a question on that. What about to that, uh, schedule, I mean, the payroll deal that we had? Remember where it says operator is twelve dollars and then C D L is two dollars? Do you still have that one? That one, that would be no misunderstanding? We still have it in the bed? Okay.
I, I think the, the problem that Mr. Ortiz was saying was that when the payroll notice was submitted, like you said, it needed to go under, um, operations or...
Right.
Licensing. And, and when Eric got it, it was for some other department. So he was not approving it.
No, that's fine. I'm, I'm not, I'm questioning that.
I mean, I'm saying that that...
And we are gonna make the correction on this table. So...
Right. I know that Eric usually takes care of, whatever we all want, all the things to do. So I don't have a problem with just it. I was just wondering because we started eleven, but after their ninety days, they're, uh, operators for the heavy equipment that we go to twelve. And then that's the way it is. And then if he's a C D L driver, then we go back to the two dollars, which is, yeah.
So just to clarify, Commissioners?
We don't have to ratify.
No, I don't.
I don't think there's an action to be taken. Just, no action.
You can approve the change subject to the proper application being submitted to the court.
To the correction.
Well, but that's, it's an H R thing. I don't think it needs to come before the court. Two point one five, discussion and appropriate action, monthly report from Dimmitt County Assistant Fire Chief, Mr. David Torres, for the month of February 2023.
Morning, Judge. Morning, Commissioner.
Morning.
As you can see, for the month of February, we had a total of nine calls. We had a few, uh, vehicle accidents, including the triple pit incident that we had during the Friday, Saturday of February. Uh, then we also had a, uh, brush fires on one of the, uh, local ranches where we also had, it also had to be dealing with the pipeline also there. Pipeline work here that was clearing up the grassfire also.
I'll entertain a motion?
So.
Motion by Commissioner Gavana. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Loco Gavana. Any discussion?
I, I just wanted to, uh, let the court know that right now we're opening the, uh, burn ban, uh, to allow people to burn, but it's gonna be through permit only. You have to come in and get a permit. If they're caught without burning, then of course, we're gonna go ahead and issue citations for that. So I just wanted to let the court know that that's what we're gonna do. They need to come to your office or to the chief's office to go ahead and get that permit, to do any type of burn. It's still instated, but we're allowing them to burn, but with a permit only.
Okay, Mr. Torres.
Go ahead, Commissioner.
Mr. Torres?
Yes, sir.
Did you, you put it on the paper? Because that's where the people get confused. They eat it out and then they put it back, uh, put it on the paper. You will be allowed to burn, but it's a permit. You know, I've never seen anything like that on the paper.
Yeah, uh, we, we didn't, uh, we didn't announce it on the paper, but I know a lot, I know the older generation, I'm sorry, but we, we did let them know through, uh, through Facebook also.
But it's better to put it as a paper than, and to have as a adage that you can add.
Yes.
Because if, 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 we don't have a compliance office. So if something goes wrong, at least you're protected that we did put it on the paper. It is appropriate that people are wearing it on the paper page.
Yes, sir.
Yes, Commissioner.
Uh, Ms. McDaniel's is real good about posting it as a newspaper. Any changes we make, we let her know. And she's a, a, a doctor for, for announcing it on the paper. And we also put it on our Facebook website that the bat is still in place, but you can burn with a permit. If you don't have a permit, it will stop you. Or if you're burning anything illegal, you're gonna be cited, cited, or if it gets out of control. But yes, it is in the paper and it is also legal.
I understand that Commissioner Poylo says about a permit, you know, you're saying now that if they're burning the vehicle, we are stopped if they don't eat, you know, and, and you're not, they don't see it on the paper. They want to know how to read it and sign it.
The permission is...
Right. So it's better just to have it on there. I think, I don't know. I'm not any type of...
Wait, just follow up and advise that they need to come and get a, a burn ban permit signed either by my office. And then normally, typically what we do is they come to my office and I go ahead and sign it. And then I send them over to Commissioner Gavana so he can have his signature on it as well. In regards to that burn ban, Mr. Torres, what's the period on it? Is it in, being lifted, is it indefinitely or?
Just right now. We're, we're actually, it ended up doing it now just due to the fact of, uh, weather that we're having right now. But if we get any type of warnings or anything, then that's when we'll go ahead and take action again.
Any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am.
Two point one six, discussion and appropriate action, monthly report from golf course Ana Gaietos for the month of February.
Uh, Judge, Gaietos had a personal, I mean, that attempt, so, uh, the court is available. She's not here to, so I'm not making much of a...
I have a motion to table. Second by Commissioner Alonso Gavana. All in favor?
Aye.
And just for, for clarification purposes for the court, um, there is a discrepancy or not necessarily a discrepancy, but just a clear error. Two point one seven and two point one eight were typed twice. So two point one nine and two point two zero are the exact same thing. Two point one seven, discussion and appropriate action, approval to hire a part-time position in the golf course.
Judge, that's, uh, that part-time position is a position that was left vacant by an employee that was holding it about a week ago. So we're trying to, especially now that we're having more, more activity up.
I entertain a motion?
So move.
Motion by Commissioner Alonso Gavana. Is there a second? Second by Commissioner Gavana. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. Discussion and appropriate action, discuss a revised sick leave policy, minimum use of sick leave of current policy. Please, Sergeant.
Um, so I heard there was some concerns. Uh, well, before I start, um, I just want to ensure everybody that on the original draft, I did submit back in January, the minimum use of four hours, uh, was there, the change from one to four. Um, and I did my best to try to explain any and all changes that were, that were there. And I, I will admit, maybe I did miss this one, but I know it was on the record in the minutes that it was tabled several, several times for it to be read by Commissioners' Court. So that's kind of why I had the expectation that if everybody's gonna read it, I shouldn't have to discuss it any further. But after some recent concern, I've heard that there's gonna wanna be some changes back from four to one. And I mean, I don't, it's a GL's decision. I don't have a problem with it. Um, the only thing I, if anything, I would recommend would just be not having a minimum use because it's not, one of the major concerns was, well, what if I have a doctor's appointment for an hour? Well, we don't really make them bring a doctor's note that they were here for an hour. So there's not really any proof that that's the reason they were gone for an hour. So I mean, I would say that no minimum use, but if you wanna have a minimum use of one hour, that's perfectly fine.
If we don't have minimum use, tell them where you posted. Tell them to write it down.
On the...
On the tab, the tab sheet.
They would just write it however much hours they want to use.
As far as, like you said, I'm in agreement. If they were to know who they had, they had their phone, bring something from there from the hospital, whatever, we could require that.
You can, you can...
It's easier for you.
But in the past, it's always, you only need a doctor's note if you're gone for two straight days.
Right.
We haven't seen any doctor's notes before.
But on an hour, I can do that.
So that's perfectly fine. We, you can, we can say the minimum use is one hour if it's for a doctor's note and you have a doctor's note for it. But that, but that's for all to discuss.
And what I got about that, you should write down there the time you get here and the time you leave. If they come back, if they know, but it was only an hour and then it's only two hours, then we can do that.
It's time to...
I just say just go back to how it was before. One hour and that's it. You don't need your, your minimum use. Just one hour, that's what it was before.
That would be...
I think in the policy, like I told Mr. Ortiz when I met with him, um, I said, I did review it, but I reviewed what the changes you had told us. Thinking that's what I was looking at instead of, I didn't read it. It's something that I was going over that for the, and then all the six changes that we did to it. So I said, so I would look back and I approved it. I made a motion to approve it. But I said, it's hard because the homework was safe. Well, I'm just gonna go to the doctor right quick, but they're back to wait. I mean, it's four hours. What if we, four hours? What if I have to make four hours? So that's why I discussed it. But I would just, just put it back to how it was before, one hour and that's it.
And, and not only that, I see that, uh, taking their time off, because if they take four hours every time they go to a doctor's lab or something like that, we're actually taking their sick leave and minimizing it more and more and more. And when they really need it, well, what are they gonna have?
But just, just for the record, the, you do, an employee does accrue four hours every day.
I understand.
So after that one day period, they will get that, that time back.
Commissioner, to, to enter, he's not aware of, of, of the policy that you, you all have. But, you know, if you run out of sick days because you like to use it, then you're wrong. And that's why we have, I, I was telling Mr. Ortiz, that's why a lot of people have a lot of comp time because they do not use their sick days. They do not, because they know if, if they use their, I mean, I'm sorry, if they use their sick days, they can finish them. But if they quit tomorrow, he's gotta pay all that comp time. And I prefer to take the comp time away and not worry about sicking. That's the way I see it. But of course, I'm the only one. I'm only one vote, but that's the whole purpose of this deal. Because I told, I told the court a lesson.
So is that...
A lot of people got a lot of comp time because they're not using their, that they're using their sick day or vacation. And they know that sick, sick leave is not gonna pay what they need.
So that's your position that that means more towards the four hours. And I know when I spoke to Mr. Ortiz, when he came to talk to me about the four hours, because I asked about that as well, he advised me that he spoke with TAC and he spoke with other counties around the area. And the reason why other counties have the four hours is because of what you just said, is because they didn't want them taking advantage of, uh, not just taking one hour and then the comp time and all that other stuff. So according to what Mr. Ortiz said, that's why he had put four on there, just based on his conversations with TAC. One and two, comparing other counties and how other counties, um, have their hours, which was reflected before. Because going back to what you said, they take one hour, just one hour, one hour. And then at the end of the day, they have all this comp time because they're not using it. And if they quit, we have to pay that out. So, correct?
Correct. That's correct.
Well, I make a motion to give it to one hour.
My motion is to be, to give it back to one hour.
Okay, okay.
I think Commissioner Loco Gavana's motion was to, to, for it to reflect back to one hour without there being any specific requirement that you have to have a doctor's note. Is that correct, Commissioner?
Second.
There's a second by Commissioner Alonso Gavana. All in favor?
Aye.
One, I have one opposition. It's Commissioner Gavana. Thank you, Mr. Ortiz.
Um, I'll make the change when we get out and then I'll, I'll get over and go to the, uh, sorry. Um, I'll make the change when we get out, and then I'll, I'll get over, I'll move to the, sorry, county clerk's office, so we can make the change. It has the copies on the county website, so I'll make the change and then I'll send it over there so it can be uploaded for everybody to see.
Two point two one, approval of travel for Demi County Judge Martha Jonsen, J.P., precinct one. Sonia Guerrero, Commissioner, precinct one. Jose Urenda, Commissioner, precinct three. Juan Calmona, Commissioner, precinct four, five, and seven. Valerie Lucava, County Auditor Carlos Pereda. County Treasurer, Oscar Ortiz. Tax Assessor Collector, Ms. Mary Sandoval. Sheriff, Robert Mendosa. Chief, Richard Ramirez. Constable, precinct three, Robert Valdenas, to attend Government Day on April third and fourth in Austin, Texas. Do I have a motion? So move by Commissioner Lucavas, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Alonso Calmona. All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. Two point two two, approval of travel for Tax Assessor Collector, Ms. Mary Sandoval and Lizeth Ambelez, Chief Deputy, to attend the TAC and VG Young Institute, twenty twenty-three county administrative training on June twenty-sixth in San Antonio, Texas.
So move.
Motion by Commissioner Calmona, second by Commissioner Lucavas, any discussion? Yes, ma'am.
Good morning.
No discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. Discussion and appropriate action reimbursement to Mary Sandoval, Tax Assessor Collector for the VG Young Institute, online course for county tax professional program designation. Motion by Commissioner Du Lucava.
Second. Second, ma'am.
Second by, give me one second, Commissioner, I'm not that fast. I'm not that fast, give me one second, I'm writing it down. Commissioner by Commissioner Du Lucava, excuse me. Second by Commissioner Alonso Calmona. All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. Thank you, Ms. Mary. He's still there, writing it down.
Also.
Yes, ma'am.
I have one thing too. This morning, Chris was telephoned, he updated me on the transition.
I know, I wanna apologize as well, because I know you came to my office, you were having issues with the telephone system as well.
Right.
And I'm, I'm not sure if you heard, we discussing with Ms. Molly, on behalf of the Commissioners' Court. I didn't wanna apologize for any inconvenience, because I know that you have to operate.
Right.
But we are working, as I mentioned to her, I'm working with Commissioner Juan Calmona. I think it feels like every day, every minute, correct, trying to get it fixed, and with the IT. Because we are, you know, zealously trying to work to get the system going. However, in the alternative, we are seeking other businesses or other programs, so I just wanted to let you know.
Yeah, well, I think after all our home calls, they really got on it, and they were communicating with me and the vendors. So as of today, they should start testing the, the transition.
Thank you, Ms. Mary. Two point two four, approval of travel for Ilinda Villa, three sixty-fifth District Court, to attend the twenty twenty-three College for Amine Corps Professionals on March twenty-sixth, twenty-ninth in Hooverville. I entertain a motion.
To move.
Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Urenda. All in favor?
Aye.
Just, excuse me, discussion?
Mr. Pereda, is this all three counties?
It's supposed to be divided by three. It should be divided by three.
It shows the total fee will be divided by Maverick Demin and Sabado counties. Any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. Three point one, discussion appropriate action to purchase new padded cell door for jail out of COs.
Good morning, Chris, very good.
Good morning.
This office, the issue has been around for a while now, the padded cell, Commissioner asked for this last week. When it was initially repaired, it should have never been repaired, as one of me had told you, maybe replace it with a new one because of the specific door that it is. Uh, there is damages already to this one, that the replacement that was made. Um, and it is, it's taken a cell out from us because we're not gonna use it. So the easiest solution would be to purchase a new door that is the correct door and not have to repair anything anymore.
Is this a byboard?
Right.
It's a byboard company?
And whose COs are we using?
That's the discussion we came upon, because at first, I thought they were trying to use my COs, but supposedly the judge back then, who had spent money aside for them to buy their paradoric in the heating.
Right, so there were funds put aside, but it was for repair, and unfortunately, I would say, COs can't pay for repair, it has to be a new, uh, door. So those funds were never utilized. This is how we found out, I'm not sure what, what COs those came out of, but they were placed off to the side.
I'm gonna, I'm gonna motion to table it, Chief, because I'm gonna, on the side of caution, I'm gonna discuss it with Mr. Pereda in regards to the COs, obviously, I'm the new judge. And so it sounds to me like this decision was made in the previous administration, and out of abundance and caution for my office and me as the new county judge, I'm gonna ask and motion to have both items three point one and three point two tabled, so that I can educate myself in regards to these two items, and what the specific COs are gonna be coming out of. And I'd like to have that discussion with Mr. Pereda.
Motion to table.
Motion by Commissioner Du Lucava, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Alonso Calmona. Discussion, yes, sir.
When this happens, don't you have a, a favor that walks around and when they pick up a person, she do what damage, when they bring them in and take them out?
Yes.
Okay, so why don't we file on those people for destruction of government property?
Well, we never said we didn't file on anybody.
Huh?
We never said we didn't file on anybody.
Well, that's what I'm saying, well, I mean, it would be nice, but you know, that's the way we know that we're gonna get reimbursed.
Right, right, so we go back and get reimbursed for the damage.
Yeah, that's why I'm saying it, because we just mentioned that with Commissioner Calmona, that he needs all these paperwork, and we weren't aware that you all have filed this guy to, or whoever it was, to get the money back, that's what I was wondering.
Just make sure you take the proper action to file.
Right.
And in the meantime, we'll stick to the next court and then we'll discuss in between.
Yes. Three point three, discussion and appropriate action status report from the jail administration. Ms. Montes.
Morning. Good morning. Um, last week, we had the marshal's inspections, we have not heard any status at this moment. We did send all the paperwork, so we're just waiting for the status on how it went. I believe it went okay, but now we're, we had some, it's just marshal inspection, we have it, so now we're, whatever we had missed with the marshal, now we're getting ready for the state, so we're, I spoke to Mr. Calmona about our jail, and he's helping me out to fix everything what we need to be fixed with the marshals and state.
Judge, also, oh.
All in favor of motion? Motion by Commissioner Du Lucava, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner, another discussion?
Judge, also, on the, we were, I had a, we had a conversation with Ms. I forget if you.
What's this?
It's not what's this? And it seems like those, those brilliant container things are already outdated. We need to start getting some new.
The what, Commissioner?
Those brilliant, like.
Airbags?
They're, they're called airbags, so they're already, like, tired, they're beyond, because if they use, let's just say they use the tear gas and something, and that hose has a track, it's gonna secretly into that mask. Now, what they're, what Scott's doing, the airbags are, if you wear the mask, but your connector's down here, so you just hook it up. But my recommendation would be to start replacing those airbags, because they do run a hazard.
And is there a compliance officer, the judge that's in charge of making sure that you guys aren't compliant with those items?
Yes, ma'am, we did have inspection in, and we did pass the.
So they're becoming one more obsolete.
Yes.
Also, Ms. Montes, I had a question in regards to, and something we discussed in the past in regards to the comp time. I know that you guys may still be short-staffed, however, as the jail administrator, have you advice with your employees in terms of utilizing to try to minimize the amount of comp time that they have?
Yes, and as a matter of fact, we hired three, we hired right now, at this moment, so, but one walked out. So we had, actually, me and Captain stay overtime for the double shift, because with the other officer being rest for a while, for that day, so it's just, we have it, and then all of a sudden, they just left.
And are we still promoting the vacancies, the job openings?
Yes. Also, I wanna thank Valerie Lucava, Ms. Valerie Lucava, for letting us borrow eighty minutes. He has some.
Eighty groups?
No, I'm sorry, eighty groups.
We do have eighty minutes, but it's just eighty groups.
Eighty groups, um, we had the marshal's inspection, and we went to the property room, and it was disorganized. So we decided to make some boxes through materials, materials, so he's making us the boxes with the materials, so we can have more organizing for the inmates to have their property here. So I just wanna say thank you for helping us.
Judge, then another, the jail, the generator went down and damaged the panel, so we had to do an emergency CO to replace it.
They're working at, at this moment, they're working on that right now.
So it would be compliance with the medical. And also, we have issues with the ice machine, so we might have to be looking into buying another ice machine, commercial.
Any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Chief.
Yes.
Could I guess, this was on the jail, I, I.
Oh, yes, yes.
Yes.
Yes, thank you.
Mr. Ramirez, uh, we had a break-in with the coins, and I believe, uh.
At the county park?
I mean, yeah, at the county park, and then I gave you that report, but then there was another incident. Commissioner Urenda told me about, about those three four-wheelers. And I was advised that they went by, the deputy, he called it at this pressure, and nobody showed up for an hour and a half. So they were going by and coming by, you know, so please, I know it's not appropriate to tell you right now, but you know, it's getting a little bit like.
Right, will you, will you call me out first, so we can get specific dates and times, if you don't mind, because I wanna go back and look at the log and then look at that call, see what we're responsible for. Because a four-wheeler has been in discussion with myself and the captain, we could bring it out with everybody about these four-wheelers damaging the county property. So we have discussed this already, and, but if, our message only goes so far, and if our deputies aren't responding in the timely fashion, for whatever reason, I wanna find out what's happening there.
Right, but an hour and a half, and they keep going by, and going by, and Commissioner Urenda told me, look. I understand, call, call the sheriff or call Ramirez.
Yes. So please, so you understand that. If it's that matter, I'm gonna make as many phone calls as I have to, and if they're busy, you know, I, I, I had a lot of luck, you know, since all the states were. We wanna take care of the issue immediately, especially if it's, I haven't seen a four-wheeler myself, but I've heard about this happen, I've seen this track happen, so.
My, my biggest concern was that there was actually people walking in the curb.
Right.
And the gentleman was on the road.
On the trail.
Right, right.
Please.
Thank you, Chief.
Thank you.
Four point one, discussion appropriate action monthly report from County Treasurer, Mr. Oscar Ortiz.
Um, so for my report this month, it's gonna look, look a little different than it has in the past because of some information I received at the past training I went to end of February, beginning of March. So the, the first page should still be the same, it's just a list of all the bank accounts and the current balance on them. Um, there's two of them in the negatives, that's just due to when I was at my training, I wasn't able to make the deposits uh, by the end of the month to make sure they're in the positive. But in total, there's twenty-seven million, nine hundred fifty-eight thousand, four hundred seventy-four dollars and ninety-one cents in the first day thing. And then on the second page, the first half is basically a breakdown of all the investments and how they're doing just for this past month of February. So we have our investments based in the different banks that they're at. So for the Texas class, we have twenty, close to twenty-nine million dollars. In the Lone Star Investment Pool, we have close to seventeen million. Um, and First National Bank, we have ten million. And with Northeastern Securities, we're up to twenty-five million between all the different funds. And all of them are going up, all our investments are going up, there were people draws, but other than that, we're still averaging about four and a half percent on all our investments. And then on the bottom, I just wanted to give Commissioners' Court like a snapshot of how payroll was for February. So on the bottom, there's the two different pay, uh, pay periods and the money going out, and then the kind of the breakdowns of the withholdings and all that kind of information.
All right, I can't, a motion?
Motion.
Motion by Commissioner Urenda, second by Commissioner Juan Calmona. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. Thank you, Ms. Ortiz.
Thank you.
Four point two, discussion and appropriate action, final financial report from County Auditor, Mr. Carlos Pereda.
Uh, you go to the front page, those are the revenues, and through the end of February, you get collected twelve million, eight hundred and thirty thousand. Twelve million, eight hundred and thirty, and that's exactly, that's basically what we get projected for collections through the end of the year. So anything that's gonna be coming over this year is gonna be in addition to what we had budgeted in the general fund. The sales tax per February was three hundred and ninety-three thousand dollars. I think there was a small drop in March, but not substantial to the point that we're not gonna be, our projections. So in total, we have fifty million, five hundred and sixteen thousand dollars. And expenditures, we have six million, five hundred and ten, which leaves us with nine million, six, nine million, six hundred and thousand, nine million, six thousand dollars revenues over expenditures in the general fund. So projecting that, we should be breaking even or having a little revenue left there, revenues over expenditures.
All right, entertain a motion. Motion by Commissioner Lucavas, second by Commissioner Juan Calmona. Any discussion?
Sorry, but.
Go ahead.
Mr. Pereda, how much did you say we got on the sales tax?
For February's, I don't know, it was three hundred and ninety-three thousand dollars.
Three hundred? Actually, he said thirty-three thousand. Because I was looking at the newspaper, sometimes I do.
Three hundred and eighty-three, he said.
Uh, it's in a different amount, there's different amounts for firing by, so is it different than what they advertise?
Me and Mr. Pereda, we get that, we get the sales tax information from the state compteries.
Oh, okay. Yeah, I know you'll get it, but on the papers.
And I meant, I got, I meant to bring it out, I forgot, sorry, I'll bring it next time.
Oh, that's great.
It's less, well, this is what came in in February, because we get it February tenth, or around the tenth.
Is it every month?
Every month, right.
Oh, okay.
So March.
Because you haven't done March, you haven't done March yet.
We, it's not in the report, but we've already gotten it.
Correct.
That's why I was saying, I know it's less than what we got.
Right, all the.
I don't, I don't remember the exact amount, but I know it was less. But it is still within projection of what we had estimated to receive in the year.
All right. Man, I make different mistakes.
Any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Montes, David, that was a, you have further information?
You're gonna abstain from?
Uh, the, the. I'll.
We have one, we have one, we have one abstention, Mr. Alonso Calmona. Four point three, clean docket, in the general fund, we have five hundred and thirty-one thousand, nine hundred and ninety-three dollars and ninety-three cents. Demi County Airport, four thousand, one hundred and thirty-four dollars and twenty-eight. one hundred thirty-four dollars and twenty-eight cents, Demme County Golf Course, seven thousand six hundred and thirty-six dollars and forty-six cents, Courthouse Security, one thousand five hundred sixty-five dollars and ninety-eight cents, Records Management County Clerk, one thousand one hundred sixty-two dollars and fifty cents, Utilities, thirty-six thousand two hundred eighty-five and ninety cents, Stone Garden, twenty-six thousand six hundred and two dollars and twenty-seven cents, C-Tip Tech Stock, one thousand dollars, Demme County Payroll, two hundred forty-seven thousand one ninety-six and twenty-three cents, COs, three hundred sixty-two thousand one seventy-nine and forty-seven cents, rate tool, one million two hundred nineteen thousand seven hundred fifty-seven dollars and two cents.
So move.
So move. Move by Commissioner Alonso Carmona, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Du Lucava, any discussion? Just one quick clarification, Mr. Pereira, on Hilafox, that payment was made, and I asked that to ask, typically, the answer, or I guess the response that my office has been getting in terms of our system being down is because they have not received payment, so has that payment been made?
Yes, yes, it was made last week, that's my guess.
Any other discussion?
Mr. Pereira, I think he explained to the judge that the general was there, and he gave us his word, he was gonna correct all these issues, and he didn't, so our other alternative is to put it off of his. I'm tired of hearing from all the executive officials, it seems like I'm not doing my job, but he was there, and I was there, and we talked to the young man.
Any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
There is no executive section, I'll entertain a motion to, yes, ma'am? Motion by Commissioner Luca to make a public comment.
Second.
Second by, motion by Commissioner Juan Carmona, excuse me, second by Commissioner Alonso Carmona.
I got a call Friday, that our dumpsters were renting them out to the businesses in Biggles, and they paid a fee, and then the city is charging the individuals, the businesses, money for the dumpsters.
And those are, there's.
The ours.
Metro?
The sanitation, the dumpsters.
Oh, sanitation.
So they're paying for the dumpsters, the businesses, but then in total, that the city is charging them for the dumpsters.
I'm writing it down, Commissioner.
So I advise my secretary to get the copy of the contract, and then, because of that kind of.
If, if we can get that to my office, and then we can get with Commissioner Uranda, you're in charge of the dumpsters, correct?
I'm in charge of sanitation.
Sanitation. If you can get that to my office, Commissioner, then we'll have a discussion, we can meet with the mayor of Biggles. Any other discussion? I'll entertain a motion to recess and adjourn.
Move.
Motion by Commissioner Alonso Carmona, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Du Lucava, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. The time is eleven forty-nine. Do we have the public? Yes, public facilities. You can't escape that fast, Commissioner. The time is eleven forty-nine, and I'm going to call the Public Facilities, Facilities meeting to order. Roll call, let the record reflect that the same individuals that were here are still We have one point three, approval of minutes of regular meeting, March the thirteenth, twenty twenty-three, I'll entertain a motion. Motion by Commissioner Juan Carmona, is there a second? Commissioner Du Lucava, seconded, any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. Two point one, discussion and appropriate action, new business? No new business, Mr. Pereira?
Yes, sir.
Judge, we finally got everything up to par, almost, the only thing is, we're having it not through water leak, so we're gonna have.
Is the water pressure?
Start breaking concrete again, and I got a request from the main company to address it, and I totally didn't address it, but I think, it's not the concrete, it's under the building, because it's right near the building, so it's coming out, and the water lines are about ten or fifteen feet away from there, and it's not like, like the last time that it was forming up, it's just a trickle, so I'm gonna start addressing that. Also, the lights, we got the majority undone, the only concern I have, that I was gonna ask you, if maybe it was done, the contract was done, and I wanna see what is really ours, and why is the other company, because there's a company that wants to take care of our water controls.
Correct.
And I was gonna ask you to look into that, to see what is ours, really, because it seems like lately, we've been tackling all the problems that are there, and I know that companies got some of it also, so I would make you go.
Did you distribute the.
Yes, ma'am.
The duties correctly. I'll entertain a motion. Motion by Commissioner Luca, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Uranda, any discussion?
Aye.
Oh, sorry. You have discussion?
I just said I, I got a bit on myself.
All in favor, now you can say I'm, all in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. Three point one, discussion and appropriate action, monthly report, Ms. Pereira.
Yes, you should have your report there in front of you, or in your package.
So move.
Motion by Commissioner Luca, second.
Second.
Commissioner, come, give me one second, Commissioner Carmona said he made the motion, so Commissioner Carmona, motion, second by Commissioner Du Lucava.
Oh, sorry, did you? Speaking to the mic.
And discussion?
It's, employees are no longer employed by Demme County, either one of them.
The ones you have on your public facilities report?
I, I, I advised, Mr.
Ortiz.
Ortiz, and I gave him the favorable, and I did hire, right now, there's somebody working there, just for your information, but he's still in the middle of Rio, and he'll be, are, looking for a county, if we're first, and we can hire him, and you can still work in there.
On the report, Commissioner Carmona?
Sorry?
Commissioner, you're, on the report, or Mr. Pereira, those two, was there both not there, or just one of them?
None, none.
Okay. This report's reflective of the last, this last of the, right?
Because we take the February, and then we just apply for the future payroll, that's why we use that, that's why they're sort of like, they're not.
Oh, there's a lot there, but they're no longer employed.
Right, because it was the report that we used to, to.
Oh, okay.
To have authorization to do the next payroll.
Correct. If there's no other discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries, three point two, clean docket, public safety, three thousand three hundred eighteen dollars and ninety-six cents.
So move.
Motion by Commissioner Alonso Carmona, second by Commissioner Juan Carmona. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries, I'll entertain a motion to recess and adjourn.
So move.
Motion by Commissioner Alonso Carmona, second by.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Uranda, this meeting has ended, it is eleven fifty-five, thank you. Thank you, Commissioner.